Welcome to the Florence Foodies Podcast, a place for the community where we come together, share the stories, voices and experiences that make Florence feel like home.
So what I want to do is I want to give a little background real quick, and we talked a little bit about this already. So this is really more so for the audience, but I want to make sure that I'm kind of explaining the vision behind what we're doing here. So when this was first just a vision, we wanted to do something that was community centric. And obviously, a lot of the content that I've been doing was rallied or centered around food, which that is still at the core, and we'll talk certainly about some local food today also.
Okay.
But it really is like the slogan says for this podcast, as a place for the community to gather. But in the case of what my guest today, and what you are doing is running for a local office, as a local elected official for the city of Florence. And so I feel like this is the, as I stated, the perfect platform to come on and be introduced to the public, the community. Our locally elected officials are the people that represent us. So we want to, if there's anybody that we want to get to know, it's certainly our locally elected officials, I believe. And I think that a lot of people probably feel like I do. And so that's kind of the heartbeat behind this idea today, very casual, laid back, a non-biased platform to just come and be introduced and share whatever you'd like to share. Obviously, we talk a little bit about some of the issues that may be relevant to the community and the position that you're competing or vying for. And we'll talk about a little bit of food too. So I wanted to put that out there because it's a little bit different than, this is the sixth episode, and this is going to be unique in comparison to the first five that we've done. But this was always something that we envisioned to be part of this platform moving forward. And so thankfully, we got an opportunity right here early on. Early voting started today for Mayor Barnes' vacated at-large city council seat. And I'm joined today by Tanya Mormon Jackson, who is one of the candidates that's running for that seat, as well as Zach McKay, who, as I understand, has accepted an invitation and will be on the podcast, should be later this week. But with that being said, Ms. Tanya Jackson, I appreciate it. When I reached out to you, you were extremely open and receptive to my invitation. And it's first thing on a Monday morning, and you're here ready to go. So I just want to tell you I respect and appreciate that a lot. Your willingness just to do this podcast, especially something new and, you know, content like this, this new, so I appreciate it.
I tell you what, I appreciate the invitation, and I definitely would support something like this. Number one, it's local. And also, if you, if you had an opportunity to just kind of do a little bit of background, you know that I promote arts and culture here in the city, as well as I do media. So I have a heavy media background. I also do podcasting. So it was a yes for me immediately when I saw the invitation, and I'm happy that, to meet you and to accept it.
Well, that, that probably worked out in our favor on it because I went and did a little homework when you told me that. And I said, you've, you've been doing the media thing a lot longer than I have, so you've got a lot more experience. So you might have to coach me up on a couple of things.
Listen, it's, I, I, I tell everyone, you should use your voice. I think everybody should really have a podcast, or at least in some way, just promote yourself. And especially business owners, I encourage them to use these social media platforms. I encourage them to go on podcasts, particularly local podcasts. So I'm happy to see that you're doing it. It's, it's just a win-win for, for both situations, you know?
Yeah, and truth be told, I'm having a blast doing it too. We've been having a lot of fun. So I'm really excited about the future of, of this whole thing. But it is, like I said, community centric. So that's the heartbeat of what's in my heart, and a place for the community to gather. And with that said, you're running for, you know, something that would be very important to any community. Like I said, as a locally elected official. So why don't we just kind of start off and just take a little bit of time and, you know, where are you from? Where'd you go to school? What's your relationship to the city of Florence and that kind of thing?
Well, thank you so much, Sam. I, I can call you Sam.
Sam, Sammy's fine, Sammy, Sammy, either way.
Which one, which one do you like?
So what I did was, as I got older, growing up, everybody called me Sammy. And then as I got older, it was Sam or Samuel. But with my role, just, you know, in the community professionally as a Realtor and just in general, I wanted to really, I encourage people to call me Sammy because the people closest to me always called me that. And so I feel like that makes it more personal. Sammy's fine, if you like.
Okay, well, thank you again, Sammy. You know, I'm Tanya Mormon Jackson. To people who are first getting an opportunity to meet me and know who I am, I have been a longtime resident here. I grew up in Florence, actually. And I went to all of the Florence One schools. I graduated from Wilson High School. I also went to Florence Darlington Technical School. So I've done a lot in our community in terms of being educated. I've worked with a lot of our youth. So I am a community and youth activist, as well as art activist. I promote young people and arts, and that has been like my passion. I was formerly the promotions producer at WBTS TV 13. So that's where my media background comes from. I've worked with young people from organizations, from being the teen coordinator at the Boys and Girls Club. I've, I've worked with 21st Century with the after-school programs. I've done summer enrichment programs at Williams Middle School, Gear Up. So I've done a lot of that. I've also had an opportunity to work with young people at alternative schools. Now, what I actually did is what we're kind of doing here now. I introduce media to young people in a time where we couldn't even envision what we're doing here now. But my thought process was, media is an art that incorporates so much collaboration. One of the first things I, I tell my students is, when, when you watch a TV show or at the end of the movie, there's like a host of credits that go up the screen. And that's because that's how many people it took to cooperate and make something happen and present that to you. So I like media, and I particularly like working with young people in media because it's a collaborative art. You know what I'm saying?
No, I, I like that a lot, just real quick. Because when you said that, immediately I resonate with it. And it is art, so putting all the things together, we try to do something creative that, that people will enjoy. But when you said that about the movies, I was like, that's a good point. Because obviously, the star actors, the key actors, but the, the extras, and then all those people that weren't even on camera in the film, we just kind of forget about them. But they put in probably the bulk of the work to make it happen. I mean, it's a lot of work that goes into that and talent skill.
And everybody has a role to play, you know? So from, from writers to people who are actually going to do the casting. It's not just that, and actually, the person who's behind the camera, the camera person who's going to do some editing, someone's doing the sound. So there's a role for everyone to play. And, and young people really, they gravitated toward it. I, I love them. I've, I've got a host of young students who are adult, young adults now. So I'm very proud to see what they're doing out here in the community and wherever they're going in life. And they often tell me how much they enjoy being a part of the program. So that's, that's what makes me feel proud. Like awards that I have been awarded for doing it, it doesn't touch me as much as what the young people say, what my students say. But we have been recognized nationally for some of the work that we've done. I've been recognized by Maybelline New York, featured in Essence Magazine for the work for being, you know, encouraging confidence through education with students. So I just love it, man, I do. Now, how that relates to what I'm doing now in terms of running for city council? This is a great city. I don't know how long you've been here. How long have you been here?
My whole life, pretty much. I was born at McLeod Hospital. So, and then I was, I spent five years of my childhood in Columbia. Lived in Augusta for about a year in the mid, you know, like 2016. But other than that, I've been in Florence. I graduated from Tech also. Went to University of South Carolina briefly, but I graduated from Florence Darlington Tech, so.
Yeah.
Hometown guy.
Yeah, I get it, but we have a great city here.
We do.
And you know, I've traveled a lot of places, been a lot of places, lived a few places. But I, what I like most about Florence is that we, we've got that small town, you know, home feel. But we also have the advantage of, you know, having access to what a city would have. And, and I'd like to continue to see that grow. And our city is growing rapidly. I love to see it.
It is.
We have some really great people who are working in our city, from the council to our actual city officials. They're bringing in big industry. They are, you know, building housing, so we're looking at a lot of that. But as I have been campaigning, those are things that, that I agree with, and a lot of people in the city, they love. But they also, we have some issues with our water infrastructure. So those are some things that I know that we need to address as a city. Those are some things that I'd like to offer a voice to in terms of being more transparent. I think, I think that's a big piece, because obviously, that's not something that is going to be solved overnight, you know? We're talking about an entire infrastructure of water of a city. And, and let's be honest, it's been decades. And we could probably say that about a lot of cities and states, our nation, in fact. So we're not, we're not alone in that. But people do want to know what's going on. So I feel like I could be a voice of transparency for that as well. I also feel like we need to address and pay attention to programming for our young people. And I know you might say, well, of course you would say that, you work with young people. Well, yes, but I, I see that to be something that is missing. We've got the components, like I said, again, we've got the components of bringing in industry. We're dealing with housing, but are we addressing keeping our young talent? Who's the voice for that? Our arts and culture is very important. Arts and culture is the soul of every city. I say, I could say that for every city, and particularly for ours. So I think that is something that we should definitely have more of a focus. That's something that I've done. I continue to promote arts and culture in our city, from film festivals to open mics. And we have a host of artists that we are together, from visual arts to singers and musicians and poets. And I myself am a poet and media artist, like yourself. So we, there's some things that we could really explore with that, you know?
Definitely, a lot of local talent. And you kind of answered one of the things that I wanted to ask, because one of the questions that I, I wanted to ask you was, and I guess I will ask you, you kind of touched on it, but maybe just more specifically, why are you running for city council? What is it, what is it that's motivating you? Because obviously, campaigning for an elected office, I mean, that's a, I would imagine, I've never done it, I imagine that could be a pretty stressful endeavor. That's a big endeavor, a big thing to take on. So what motivates you to do that?
Well, I tell you something, there's, there's a couple of things you can do. You can look at what's going on in your city, and you can do something about it, or you can complain about it. I decided to do something. I'm in a place in my life where, you know, my, my children, I have adult children, they have grown up. And, you know, I have an empty nest, they're living their life, and I have the time to step up and do more. I figure, why have influence if you're not going to use it? I have a host of, a network of business owners and business leaders, different organizations that I work with all the time. And I know that I can bring more to the city. I could be that voice, I could be that representation for, you know, arts and culture, for young people. I could, I could do that because I'm in a lot of rooms. So I'm in a lot of rooms with, from executives, business owners, entrepreneurs. So I have those relationships, and I think that's something that's very important. Like I said, we've got officials already on board who are doing some wonderful things. And I know that I have a voice that would add to that.
Okay, I respect that, that's a really good answer. The other thing is, and you touched on it, is the water. And I, so I've got to mention, I've got to bring it up, because as you know, that's been, especially going back to last year and Debbie and everything, there was a huge topic of the discussion or conversation, especially on social media in our community. Some people feel like, because of where our water management system reaches outside of the city, other places in the county, so like Quimby, Timminsville, things like that. What are the discussions and, you know, what are some things that you think of whenever it comes to the problem? And then actually address that? Because a lot of people, even, even myself included to an extent, may not even really understand what the issues and hurdles could be with the water management system.
Well, also, you have to keep in mind, I am a candidate, I'm not on the council. So some of those things, I don't have the actual details on. But those are things that I, I, too, I have those same issues right now as a citizen. So I'm coming from that point of view. There are things that I want to know. There's transparency that I would like to have. And so in being a, being on the council, I, I feel like I want to add that transparency piece, to be that communication piece. I think that could, they could deal with that a lot better.
So you could get more access and then, and then try to troubleshoot and that kind of thing?
Obviously, because none of us on, not one person on council would be an expert in terms of water. But we will get the information, and as a council, you know, it is a collective decision.
So, real quick, I didn't mean to cut you off, but that's, that's a perfect segue. That's why I wanted to get that for the next thing that I want to ask. Because, and part of saying that is an excellent point. And a lot of citizens, a lot of people don't know how a city functions. They don't know the role of a city manager. They don't know the, the actual role or the, the power of the mayor. They don't actually, we, you know, it's just, I mean, we all have careers and roles and families and kids and all of the things. So it's a great opportunity for somebody that you're, you're on the precipice of diving right into the heart of that whole world in terms of the management of the city. And so the, the next question I had is, what? Go ahead.
I wanted to say something.
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
Because you're right, a lot of people don't understand that. But what I wanted to mention is, if people will go online at the city of Florence, right now, they have City University. And they are addressing exactly what you're talking about. They get an opportunity to go behind the scenes and learn every role of, of what's happening in the city. So they'll find out what the city manager does and every component of what makes the city work. So people who are interested in finding that out, please go to the city of Florence and look up City University. And I encourage people to, to find out. Because a lot of times, of course, we don't, we don't know. And we're online all the time, we're scrolling, and we research and Google everything. So I say, hey, Google that.
So cityofflorence.com, and then it's just a, I'll, I'll put the link down in the description of this episode.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's perfect, I'm glad you mentioned that. I'll, I'll put the link down in the description of this episode. So if you're interested in that and learning more about how all of this works, you can go to that link, cityofflorence.com. I'll drop it down in the description. Just kind of briefly, to just kind of give an overview without them going that extra step if they would like to, what does, what is the role of a city council member? What, what can a city council member actually influence and impact in that position?
Right, well, a lot of the things that happen in your everyday life locally is decided by your city council. I don't know if you've heard this statement before, that, that politics is local. It really is, because we're talking about the same things that people are concerned about. Your, from your infrastructure, your water, your roads, your schools, the zoning, all of those things that pretty much have an impact on your daily life are decided in your city council. And so that's why it's important to put people in place who are going to be a voice for you, who, who's going to be an unbiased voice as well. Because for me, like I say, I, I work with young people and I work with students. So it's not about whether they come from a home, whether their parents may be Democratic or Republican, because I'm not thinking about that. That's not a partisan thing for me. And this is a seat that is at large. So, you know, I would be a public servant for everyone in this city. And my concern is not going to be what their particular politics may be. My concern is going to be that their needs are being met, that when they have questions for me, that if I don't have the immediate answer, they need to know that I will do the homework and I will get it back to you. Because I'm a person who likes to communicate. I'm a person who communicate, like I said, I have a network of, of community leaders and community business owners that I communicate with all the time. So we're going to figure out how to get things done for you. And I want to make sure that it is overall best for everyone in the city.
One issue, so we talked about water, that's a major one. This is one that I've heard, I see people mentioning on social media and that kind of thing. I don't know if people think about it as much as others, but as a local Realtor, this is something that I definitely have on my mind frequently. So there's a lot of residential development going on. I mean, we've got hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of houses in subdivisions that are either already under construction, nearing completion, or have recently been approved. And I imagine you feel like I do, the growth of the city, you mentioned earlier that we have this tight-knit community, but yet we have this small city environment also, it's kind of a hybrid, it's unique. And it's one of the things I love about Florence is, I like the tight-knit aspect. If that didn't exist, everything that I'm doing, I don't think would make a lot of sense. But at the same time, we are growing, which I think is encouraging too. Because I mean, it's, you know, it's just a lot of opportunity. Where we're at regionally in the PD, we're the heart of the PD here in Florence, that provides a lot for our citizens, but also a lot to offer to those in the surrounding areas, whether it be Darlington, Hartsville, Timminsville, Marion, et cetera, et cetera. My question though is, and what a lot of people's question is, is when we look at all of this residential growth and industrial business growth, I think a lot of people's concern or question is, what, how is our road infrastructure in the city going to hold up to this growth? Now, I'm not asking you for a plan or an answer, because I understand you, you haven't, you're not in the seat at the moment, you know, as a candidate. But I'm just saying that when you look at that, have there been, are there any, or what thoughts come to your mind when you think about that? That what a lot of people like myself see is, this could be a growing and potential problem.
I'm having that conversation with some of my friends as well, as well as people that I'm out here talking to. And definitely, that's something that we're going to have to address. That is a part of the infrastructure. We have to think about traffic, zoning, and all of that is a part of it. So yes, because we don't want to lose that small-town feel. I mean, I've lived in a big city, and I know what it's like to be stuck in rush hour traffic. And I, and even if you go to Columbia, which is a, a bigger city than Florence, you know, they've, they've got some traffic issues there.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so. So that's not what we want to see here, but we are beginning to see traffic. So those are things that I feel like need to be addressed, and, and I open, I feel like that needs to be open dialogue. I also encourage people who, I tell people all the time, I'm running to be a public servant. And, but I also like how you hold me accountable and hold my feet to the fire. I want to do that to you as well, because I want you to use your voice. I want you to come to the city council meetings. Or, listen, they're available online, watch, and issues that, that.
On YouTube, right?
They're on YouTube. So you have the opportunity to know what is going on in your city. You also have the opportunity to voice, you know, your opinion. So come out, and you have so many council members that you have an opportunity to speak to. There are three district council people for District One, Two, and Three. And then there will, there will be three at-large council seat, as well as the mayor. So if you really think about it, along with your, your district, whichever district you live in, you have that representative that you have an opportunity to talk to. One, you have the mayor, and then you have three at-large. So you have five people that you have an opportunity to communicate with. And I know that with me on council, I definitely would be a person who's very easy to get in contact with. If you've got a question, again, I'm going to make sure that we find that answer for you. I just want to encourage, encourage people to use their voice, you know? Politics, elections, they have consequences. And so I feel like it's important to know who you're putting in these seats. Or at least have a clear idea, or, or feel that, okay, yeah, there's something about this person that I trust. There's something about this person I can feel. I, I want people to know that we are living in a time where it is important to know that your leader cares. It is, because we should be caring about people. We all essentially want some of the very same things. Business owners want to make sure that their businesses are functioning properly. They want to make sure that, you know, they can grow. You, we, as just regular people, outside of having our business or your job or whatever that may be, we want some of those same core essential things. We want to be able to put food on our table, have a roof over our head. And we want our kids to have a good education. And that crosses every demographic. It has nothing to do with what culture I'm from, it has nothing to do with my socioeconomic background. But can I have those basic things? Because we're always going to have a class of people who are going to be wealthy. We've got a working class who's working very hard, and we need to be protecting them. And I don't feel like a lot of them are feeling protected right now. So knowing that someone is paying attention to that, knowing that we have someone who comes from a working-class family, who has raised their kids, who knows what it's like to sacrifice, who is looking to make sure that I have productive young citizens in this city, who is looking beyond all of the color barriers, all of the stereotypes, looking beyond that, and choosing to be better, to be more, and to make sure that they're productive. I mean, I, I feel that. That has been my goal. For the longest time, my biggest role has been a mother, and I'm proud of that. And so you asked me why I decided to step up, and I, you know, we talked a little bit off camera, and I told you, well, you know, my kids are adults now, they're out here and they're, you know, working in higher education. I'm happy to know that they're going to be influencing other young people. And they're not looking at where their parents come from. They're looking at being, you know, educating and making sure that these young people have a future. And I don't know, I can't say that I influence them to do that, but it makes me happy to see that they care about that. I know what they saw from home. And I like to think that every, every young person would get an opportunity to know that someone cares. I've had students who, you know, just having an extra person who cares, even outside of your parent. Because think about it, even yourself, you know? Someone else had to motivate, motivate you. Someone else probably took an interest and, and probably sparked something that you like. And I think all of us have an opportunity to do that, you know? So that's why I stepped up, that's why I chose to do this, and.
It's community. And so that's, that's the, that's the key word, and it's been mentioned multiple times today, but it really is, not trying to beat a drum to death, but it's, it is the heartbeat of, you know, what we envision with this of what we're doing. And I have a theory, I think that, I think some of the disconnect, because you raise a good point. You know, like you can attend various city council meetings and ask questions and make statements. And I think over recent years, with social media and the internet, people, you see more and more videos of people at local meetings. And I think that makes the light bulb go on for other people in other communities. Like, oh, okay, I can go to meetings too and, and voice my concerns, or recommendations, or just anything, you know? Just give applause and whatever it may be, but I can go speak and actually have my voice heard. And to go back to it again, I think that part of the disconnect could be, and what would help alleviate some of that, and encourage and motivate more people to be interactive with our local politicians at the local level, is exactly what we're doing here today. Because I think it's different, the disconnect is, and especially with, and our culture's become so highly politicized and polarized, you know, at this point, that it would be very easy to feel a disconnect, whether a candidate is a member of your preferred party or not. Do they still feel a disconnect? Well, that's the politician.
Right.
And but the thing is, and especially, again, on the local level, you're a citizen of Florence, just like me. These are, these are residents of our area the same as we are. And so we can sit down and have a conversation like this, and people are getting to know you personally. Now it changes. So now, it could feel intimidating going to a city council meeting, you know? But I would imagine it's a lot less intimidating if you're like, oh, well, that's Tanya Jackson, that's Brian Braddock, that's George DeBailey. I know George, even, even if it's just, I've, I've watched him on local platforms and gotten to know him personally. I know what he, where he likes to shop, I know what he likes to eat, or whatever's within reason, and just that personal element.
I agree, but I, I have the same. Community is what community does. And you're right, people could be intimidated in certain, certain rooms. But that's why I say you have to know that that person cares, know that they're approachable. I know that I am. I'm out here, I've been knocking on doors, I'm, and, and just, people just know me within the community because I've always been out here. They know that they can approach me, they know that they can talk to me, and that's important. You're right, you, you said it, like, okay, they could say, well, I know Tanya, I know I can talk to her. And, and people are talking to me all the time, and I want them to continue to do that. And, and I, I love that, in fact, because that's how it should be.
The people know that I, when I say this, it's the truth, that I believe that there's nothing that can bring us together, there's nothing that does bring us together globally, more so than food. Food is the one thing that can bring us to the table, literally, no matter what background you're of, or whatever your belief system is or anything, right? You know, people might ask, well, the Florence Foodies Podcast, where does that fit with it? It all ties in together. Food and community go hand in hand. We gather and we eat, all of our pecan festival, Florence Food and Wines, Florence Food and Wine, like these. Every time that you bring a community together, there's usually food involved. So this is our day-to-day life. So the question I've got, I want to ask you two questions, actually. There's one that I ask every guest that comes on here, and I'm going to ask you, but I'll save that for the end. But that's more of a micro question. I want to ask you a macro question, though. So you're a Florence gal, born and raised, right? And.
Not born, but raised.
Yeah, that's why I said, right, because you were raised in Florence, and graduated from Wilson, went to Tech. So I mean, you're, you're local. So historically, what is your view, what are some, when I say this, what comes to mind? And I believe that you, like me, have a real passion and drive for local business.
Yes.
Not the, no, no knock on the corporate franchises, but, and again, my audience knows, I really am a big supporter of our local businesses, and especially in the restaurant field for this conversation. What are some of Tanya Jackson's favorite historical places in the city of Florence when it comes to our food scene?
When it comes to the food? I used to like Skyview. Have you heard of that one?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, I used to, I liked.
You used to get grilled cheese sandwiches there and put the pickles on them.
I used to like to get the Calabash shrimp box, man. That was, that was one of my favorites, but I, I used to like Skyview. Of course, and still today, 301 Drive-Thru is, is really popular here. Those are the old ones. Those are two of the old ones that kind of pop up in my mind that were a couple of my favorites.
Yeah, so then the other question, so we ask every guest when they come on. This is the, just a theme of being a guest on the Florence Foodies Podcast. In the here and now, what is your favorite item to get from a local restaurant? And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a mom and pops, it can be a franchise, it doesn't have, but just a restaurant in Florence in general. You go out to eat, what is your favorite item to go seek out?
Ooh, because I'm a real foodie, man. We could have a conversation about different, and, and the thing is, I like something from almost all of, I've got a lot of places that I like, and I, and I like certain things from them.
You can name more than one, there's, there's no penalty for that, if you want to.
Okay, so, I like to, I like going to Little Jazz Is Cafes. Okay. So I like to, I like going to Little Jazz Is Cafe downtown Florence. They have some great grit bowls. So I, I like that. Um, I like going to, uh, Jazz on Dargan. They have good food. They have these, uh, I don't know if you've tried them before. They have these cheeseburger egg rolls.
I haven't had the egg roll.
I didn't even know that was a thing. I'm used to the traditional egg roll that you get from like a Chinese restaurant, you know, with the, with the cabbage or whatever. But I, I was sitting next to someone and I was like, well, what's inside of that? And they told, I tried it. I love it. Um, there's just a lot of stuff. That's true. Um, and I, and I also like, uh, we've got the place Dizzy Crab. They've got a lot of good things on their food menu. I like the pork chop. It's so good. I had one last night. So like I said, I could go on and on because I like something from almost everywhere. We, we could come back and have a strictly food conversation if you want.
Well, that's not a problem. That's, this would be the place to do it. Um, those are good answers. I like asking that question because it gives people, it incentivizes people to go try stuff. So they'll hear that and say, you know, you could put a name to a face and then actually put a food item to it and say, I've never had that. I'm going to go check that out. You know, that's what Tanya likes to get. I want to see what that's like. Yeah.
Because I'm very picky.
Oh, the people will judge it. That's one area where people, everybody's a critic when it comes to food. So.
Yeah.
Good answers. I, I like those answers.
All I want to do is say, thank you. Thank you for inviting me. I've enjoyed it.
Yeah, no, but thank you for coming. And like I said, it was short notice. So I, you know, this is something I wanted to do. And then I knew that, um, the election's coming up. And so real quick, early voting started today. This is March 17th. Now that by the time you see this, it's probably going to be the 19th. I would, I would like to get this out Wednesday, the 19th. So early voting has already been ongoing. But as we sit here today, it has started this morning and she, she's mentioned the hours, but it's Monday through Friday. Election day is April the first. So make sure you get out and vote, you know? Tanya makes a great point that we can't, we can't complain about things or, or, you know, voice very fervent opinions if we haven't made the effort to at least go out and vote. And so we got an opportunity to meet Tanya Jackson today, learn a little bit about her and her background, what she likes to eat. Of course, you know, we're going to do that here. And I would encourage you to, as she said, get out and let your voice be heard. Get out and vote. This is a city election. Um, you can only vote if you're in the city, right?
Yeah, you have to be in the city limits, but tell them about this good coffee because I like this. I'm going to go get some.
Can you grab the bag right there?
Oh.
That's it right there. So this is, for those of y'all that have kept up, you know, but if you haven't, thank you for pointing out, this is Batch Nine Coffee. So another local business is F E Pops. We did a showcase with Tommy Bulger, the owner of F E Pops and F E Pops, um, restaurant about four weeks ago. So you can find that on the YouTube channel. It's a great video. Tommy's a great guy. Hopefully he'll be a guest on the podcast sooner than later. But this is Batch Nine Coffee and it is excellent. And literally, I think pretty much everybody that I've had up here, I have to think through it. Maybe Matt didn't say anything, but everybody has commented how good this coffee is.
Like, uh, we're talking and I'm like, you know, I keep sipping from this cup, but it really is good. And I'm drinking it black.
Same. That's the way to do it.
If you can drink coffee black, it's gotta be good coffee.
Now, we do have creamer up here in the Florence Foodie Studio, but yes, I, I drink mine black. And so I respect that also. He's drinking black. It's fantastic coffee. It's local business, support local business. Uh, that's something we certainly care about. So it's good coffee.
So we'll make that my number three.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right.
They've got good brunch too. So.
All right.
Make sure that y'all get out and vote. Early voting is happening as you're seeing this. And election day is April the first.
The, the only thing I want to do is I would like to encourage people to use their voice. And as a candidate, this might not sound good for me personally, but I want to say, whether you vote for me or not, I just want you to know the importance of using your voice. I don't want you to end up on the back end feeling like, uh, any regret because you don't get an opportunity to do that if you, if you did not take the opportunity to be a part of the process. So I really want to make sure that people understand that. And I've, I've met a lot of people who, uh, believe it or not, they say, well, you know, I don't do politics. And I say to them like, listen, you can't say that you don't do politics because your kids go to school. You know, you're driving on these roads. You, you are doing politics. And if you don't do politics, let me tell you something, politics will do you. Because there will be decisions that are made that you won't be able to do anything about because you didn't choose your leader. You didn't choose who would represent you. You didn't choose who could be your voice. And I just want to remind people that there is a special election and you get an opportunity to vote early. Early voting is from, excuse me, March 17th, which is today, through the 28th, Monday through Friday from eight 30 to five. And they can vote at Mount Zion AME Church, or they can go to the election commission office. So do that.
On Third Loop Road.
On Third Loop Road. And, um, Mount Zion AME Church is on Chevy Street.
Yeah.
But use your voice, people. That's what I want you to do. And election day is April 1st. I know it sounds crazy. It's April Fool's Day, but do not be fooled. There is an election. Get out there and use your voice.
And with that being said, Tanya, I appreciate you coming on. Um, I know it was short notice, but you responded and you were here this morning, ready to go, first thing on a Monday morning. And so I just enjoyed being able to spend some time with you and get to know you a little bit.
Like Wes.
So I wish you all the best and I appreciate y'all's viewership as always, and God willing, we'll see you on the next one.